Appreciate it.
All the common council meeting to order for this day, September sixth, twenty twenty-three. Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republican Republicans. One nation. In this small. The Republican Party.
Hey, would you please do roll call?
Marx.
Here.
Van Blarcom.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Elkin.
Here.
Banner.
Together.
Land.
Here.
Okay, first order of business, we're open for public comment. Is there any public comment? Can you go to the podium? Please, that's easier for everybody to hear you then.
Alright, I'm Kevin Mallett. Um. I ride snowmobile in Polk County, here to talk a little bit about the Stour Trail. I'm sure you're gonna be told tonight how scary it is to walk on the trail. With snowmobiles on there and horses on there, which I don't believe there is any fear of that. Right in the city of Amory, you come into town, we've got a bicycle lane where traffic is at forty-five miles an hour separated by one white line. And I'm sure the city has done an awful lot of investigating. Before they did put this bike lane in. And then we get downtown, we got bicyclists riding between parked cars and a live lane of traffic. I think that's more dangerous than anything. I just, I don't know. Why we can't. Share this trail. I drive semi every day. I'm up and down the roads with vehicles driving by at fifty-five miles an hour. They're saying we can't safely go past them at ten miles an hour on a snowmobile? Doesn't make much sense to me, and since the snowmobiles have been on that trail, if you talk to people that do snowmobile. Walk, hike, ride their bikes, they say the trails have never been nicer out there to go on. And that's because of the snowmobile clubs keeping the trails maintained. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's two, pick, we'll pick one.
Hello, my name is Paulette Adair. Um, I am from Luck, I am representing the equestrians. And I advocate for allowing equestrians on the Stour Trail. We've been very fortunate to be able to ride and enjoy the trail. If only for six weeks a year since two thousand twenty-one. There have been no safety incidents, there has been no damage to the trail, we have been greeted and welcomed by people. Um. It really hasn't been any big deal. Um, it's very tiring to have people that want to continue. To cause rift between the user groups. Um, just so they can get their own way. Um, we, we are considered by the state of Wisconsin, a silent sports group. And we deserve the right to ride on these trails, just like all you other people. Um. We're supportive of the, of the silent sports. And um, I just wanna be able to continue to use the trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Anderson, I'm the owner and founder of Corder Moon Acres Ecoin Therapy Center, west of town. We have quite a few kids out there that ride with us, we have. This year we've had fifteen riders in various stages of disabilities from physical to psychological. To any sort of mental disability they may have, a lot of our riders need. Need the horses for therapy because horses feel what we feel. And these riders just absolutely adore, they sit on their horses and they just, they go from ear to ear. We've had clients start out and they're just like this and they don't wanna do anything and now at the end of the session, it's. Hi, and they're waving their arms and everything, cuz the horses are a big help to these riders we have. And the Stour Trail is so nice cuz it's so close to us, it's just a hop, skip and jump down the road for us to have these riders ride on this trail. Um, our volunteers are also our big help to the riders too, and the volunteers like to ride horse too. And for them to be able to ride on this trail is a really blessing for us since it is so close. And some of our riders have, I, I have to tell you one quick story, but I'll make it snappy. One of our, one rider that I heard, it wasn't mine. At our facility, this is a Downs child that would talk one word, meal, bed, whatever, one word. His mom took him up to the Spooner Rodeo, he sat on the back of a horse, he reached down, put his arms around the horse and said, in a complete sentence. Thank you for saving my life. That's what these animals do for these kids and the Stour Trail is a big asset to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Hi. My name is Bob Franks. And I'm an advocate for keeping the trail open for everybody. Um, at a time when I don't think the city of Amory is exactly prospering. Um, I think that shutting off a main conduit. For ATVs, for snowmobilers, for other people to utilize the trail. It just doesn't make sense for the city. Um. I would like to understand through this discussion, what happened to, to. Make this decision? Because from what I understand, the sheriff was quoted as saying that there was a very positive safety record on the trails. So I don't know if there is some incidents out there that, that need to be discussed. Um. Another thing I'd like to understand is the electric bikes. And it's also my understanding, electric bikes are still allowed on the trail. Those can go up to twenty-eight miles per hour. So. Why are some groups getting cut off from the trail? And others get to continue to use them for, for, for other reasons. So, I think we should keep it open.
What do you mean? Um. My name's Scott Droblo, we own property about twenty acres, pretty close to the trail, it's a. About a, a short rifle shot or a long. Bow and arrow shot to get to the trail from our place. I, I think the issue that I've seen in the last four years here. The most important issue is. When you have motorized users. You're gonna have people that obey the speed restrictions, if there are any, and you're gonna have people that. Don't care so much for speed restrictions, or feel they don't apply to them. And when you mix. Motorized uses and. Bicyclists and pedestrians of all ages. People with dogs, people without dogs, people with young children. People without. You're gonna, you're gonna have safety issues on a eleven-foot wide trail. That, that's unavoidable. And what a lot of studies around the US have shown is that when you have a trail that has certain uses. And you open it up to supposedly all users. You no longer have all users using that trail. You have the motorized users and the other people tend to drop out. And stop using a trail they've been using for years. And I can appreciate some of the earlier comments about specific user groups. Enjoy, enjoying the trail. But. The reality is. People are not going to ski if they have snowmobiles. Uh, you know, their snowmobiles go in both directions, and if you're on skis or snowshoes or walking in the winter. You, there's no room for. For one snowmobile and a skier, let alone two snowmobiles passing each other that happen to be right where a pedestrian is. So. I would strongly urge you to. Keep the, the protection for the silent sports because there are no other trails in Polk County that I'm aware of. That, that have, that have those users without machines on the trail. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Bob Asmussen, I'm a resident here in the city of Amory. And a bicyclist as probably some of you know. Um. I, I think that they, I hope the council will look at the history of the trail and take that into consideration. And give it some heavy weight as you deliberate this. Um. You go back, uh. I think it was two thousand seventeen, this, not this council, but the Amory City Council. Um, Rick, you probably were on at that time and there was a resolution passed, and I haven't looked at it lately. But it basically acknowledged that the, the Cattail Trail to the east was. Going to be motorized. And the non-motorized part to the west was gonna be just continued as that. And of course, when that trail. Uh, from, from here in Amory to the west was first designed and developed and paid for. By the taxpayers of the state of Wisconsin. It was intended to be used exclusively as a non-motorized trail. And uh. That's the way it was designed, developed, in fact, it's my understanding that. Uh, there was a grant to Polk County of six hundred thousand dollars to. Put a top on that trail with the specific condition. That it be for pedestrians and bicycles, non-motorized uses. Um. That's the history. I hope you consider that history. It has served us well and uh. I just don't see the need to take on the additional risks and safety issues. That will inevitably come from this mixed use of that Shunka Trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leanne Overman. Um, I have been using the trail for about fifteen years as a walker, a snowshoer and a cross-country skier. Um, my favorite part of the trail is the beautiful tree canopy in any season. Um, I have been working really hard on promoting the trail for the city of Amory. Um. On a year-round basis. Uh, I invite people to come to Amory. Um, or people that are living here to participate in things. Um, on the trail, today we started walking Wednesdays and had twelve. People from the community come and join us for a walk on the trail. Um, these people are buying gas, they're visiting the shops, they're buying ice cream. And coffee and they're buying food and beverages twelve months out of the year. Their economic contributions are important to the city and to the surrounding communities. We have promoted L's and library with their bike. Um, at the farmer's market, we have partnered with the hospital and the power-up program. The animal shelter has used the trail for their get-your-tail-on-the-trail walk. And just last week, we met former Amory, Amory Mayor Kay Erickson with her walker at the trailhead. Um, we see high school athletes on the trail and um. The. Friends group has just worked really hard at promoting the trail and our main goal with the trail has always been safety. That's our number one concern. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name's Steve Hall, been a member of this community since nineteen seventy-one. Lot longer than a lot of people here. I've used the snowmobile trails, the roads. And every source to get around that there is possible, I've ridden horses, I've walked, I've maintained trails, I've snowmobiled and I've ATV'd. From this little town all the way up to Ashland, Wisconsin. I find a lot of people that advocate for multi-use trails that are mushers. Bog sliders, in case you don't understand. The horse people, I have not heard one instance from anybody coming up here of any accident. Nobody here has reported any accident when they're talking about all this safety. I have experienced it personally with mushers, horses and walkers, I have never seen a snowmobiler blare by any horse. I've always seen them have the compassion to pull over to the side, let them by. I've always practiced it and everyone I've ever seen on the trail does as well. Every snowmobile club emphasizes safety, safety, safety. The state of Wisconsin emphasizes it when they give each person their certificate of safety to ride a snowmobile. So if we wanna talk about safety, we'll talk about that. Wanna talk about decent notices given to businesses and businesses affected, I've heard a lot of people talking about the money coming into Amory. Amory, this is just the first stop. When you come across Dresser, Amory's the first stop, how about Turtle Lake, Clear Lake, Cumberland? How about Ashland, Wisconsin? How about everybody from, that comes across the border into Dresser, starts at Dresser and decides to go? They go all the way north. I run into people that talk about. People from our community that made this fabulous trip all the way to Alaska. You, are your people in here talking about no other trails? Who are they kidding? Amory is loaded with trails, we've got Walking Park right in North Park. We've got. Um, Didi Kennedy Bill, if you, people don't know about the ski trails out at Didi Kennedy Bill. They are excellent, bar none, they are some of the most excellent in the county. Miles to walk around. There's another section that's across over by the dam, that's actually paved for walkers. And yeah, it's paid by taxpayers' money. Then you've got uh, the national parks over in Osceola. After that, you've got the Ice Age Trail, and if you wanna take a hike, you can go clear across the United States of America on that Ice Age Trail. And again, I'll go back to safety. Where's the reports on safety? Trail camps set up on these trails out here indicate that less than a hundred people use these trails a month. Walking. Walking. Bicycling, bicycling, there's a few more. Any given weekend when the trails are open to snowmobiles, we have over. Probably a thousand coming in on snowmobiles. The same goes for ATV'ers all over Wisconsin, ATV'ing is probably. About thirty percent higher than the snowmobiling. And the use is tremendous, if you go up to Bayfield County, where I spend a lot of time snowmobiling and ATV'ing. One of my favorite places to go is called the Pub and Grub. And you have horse people in there, you got horse people tied up. While people are coming in with their ATVs. You've got hikers, they've got miles and miles. Of cross-country ski trails that the hikers use year-round. And again, no reports of any safety issues, no reports of any accidents to provide foundation for these accusations. And as far as the statements of. This trail and the other trails being considered for blacktopping, yeah, there was, there was a lot of trails throughout Wisconsin and Minnesota that were considered it. Southern Minnesota was a test plot for that. And it failed, it fell flat on its face, they blacktopped some of the old snowmobile trails. Shortly thereafter, they were coming apart, and then after that, they could not get funding to redo them. It's a huge, huge expense to blacktop trails, it's a huge expense for the snowmobile club and ATV clubs to be grooming these trails. I think it's rightfully so that they maintain their stature, they maintain their use as well as the walkers. That nobody be denied use of these trails or land. I think it's been cut back far enough already. Every day it seems like more and more of our rights get taken away, and this to me is a right that's being taken away, we should have great to use the land that we paved for, all of us should, not just a group, thank you.
I think that we will close public comment only because it's already been twenty minutes worth of it. Um, we will have. Um, our discussion coming up, but I need to back up. To our consent agenda items. Um, which is. City Council minutes, uh, August second, Special Counsel August sixteenth, Committee of the Whole August sixteenth. Plan Commission August twenty-fourth, Airport Commission August tenth, and Recycling Committee August sixteenth. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda items.
I second it.
Yeah. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Okay, second item is Stour Trail discussion with friends of the Stour Trail who asked for some time. To make a, make their presentation at this time.
My name is Brooke Wallen, uh, I reside in, or outside of Frederick, Wisconsin. Um, I've been a part of the Friends of Stour in its various forums since two thousand and three. Um, was not, uh, under the impression that I was gonna provide a, uh.
Well.
Presentation, but would be happy to open up a, a.
Open discussion.
Yep. Um, I've been involved in all aspects of the group and consider myself the spokesman this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and I guess, um, uh, if, I don't know what the, the goals of the, the council is. Um, but if I, um. You know, if you wanna go back and, and you know, why is this so crazy, why is this such a hot potato? You know, I'd be happy to, to address that in, in front of all of these people, I've got no problem with that.
Well, first off. Nothing the city of Amory does will change the status of the trail. That's, so everybody gets that clear, there's nothing that we can do that will change it. Um. It was brought to me to have this discussion to kind of see where things are, if, if, if the city should, um, support. The, the, the trail as it is now, um. After the, the latest ruling, or, so I guess it's important that we heard from the people who are. Um, advocates for keeping it as an open. And it's also now important to hear from. Um, advocates for the, the Friends of the Stour Trail to. You know, explain. What the challenges are if it becomes a, a multi-use trail.
Um, it. Uh, well, um, I'm gonna back up just a, just a little bit.
I'd appreciate that, you know, it's offered to.
Yeah.
It's a hot potato, I'd like to hear that.
If anybody wants to interrupt at any time, please do, this could be a conversation. How long do you guys wanna? You wanna shoot for fifteen minutes?
At the most, sure.
At the most?
Sure.
Okay, good. Um, so in two thousand and three is when the, uh, uh, twenty years ago is when the, the Department of Natural Resources finally bought this abandoned railroad bed between Amory and Dresser. And he's, and decided to make it into a state trail. So the county was just going to, um, the county parks director at the time simply said, well, we're just gonna make this an extension of the Cattail Trail. Uh, and a couple of us approached her and said, well, I believe you have to go through a planning process and sure enough, there's a state planning process to come up with a master plan for any public lands. Uh, public park, or excuse me, for any of these state trails or state parks. Um, so it was kind of a battle to get the county to finally acquiesce and say, well, okay, we're gonna. We're gonna come up with a, a, a plan for this, and the Department of Natural Resources kind of drug their feet too. But, um, bottom line is, in about two thousand and four, we ended up, the county did end up with a plan for this trail. And the plan for the trail in two thousand and four was a dual-use trail. It was, um, uh, basically two avenues, one paved. Preferably paved and one unpaved, one with motorsports on it and one with silent sports on it, and I don't remember where horses ended up in there at all, if they ended up in there. I looked at, glanced at the plan today and I didn't see horses on there at all, but you know, be that as it may. Um. I think everybody knew that, that, that was not possible, the trail, the, the landscape does not allow for that. Twenty-some feet or, um, thirty foot is what they wanted at first, it just, the landscape just doesn't allow for it. Um, Friends of Stour at that time called, um. Friends of Lincoln Osceola Garfield Greenway simply said, this is not going to amount to anything because it's going to, uh, it's a, a million dollars a mile. To, to engineer and build this thing, so we kind of felt like it was gonna end up as the Cattail again, and that's exactly what. The, uh, citizens that organized, um, Friends of Law Greenway didn't want, we didn't want another Cattail. Um, because that, it's just, it's a soft surface, it's no fun to ride, horses have been allowed on the Cattail Trail for twenty years. Yet we don't see horses on that trail, what's the problem? There's a, there's a problem with that Cattail Trail, there's also the, um. The, another rail trail, the Sawmill Trail, which runs from Clear Lake to Clayton, another very soft trail, all chewed up by motorsports. Um, that could be a, put horses on there with just a wave of their, the county could do that with a wave of their hands. Then we've got another trail, the, uh, another rail trail that's very popular, which is the Gandy Dancer, which is. Snowmobiles in the wintertime. Uh, and, and bike hike in, in the summertime. So, um, actually at that, and so that, that's kind of where we, where we started, and from there. Pardon me, the whole thing just devolved into more of a shit show. Um, and it's been like that for a number of years, so the only reason that the, so. Bottom line is, um, when the, when the Friends of Stour, I'll just say Friends of Stour, even though we were friends of Lincoln Osceola Garfield Greenway back then. When Friends of Stour decided, or. That we weren't gonna get the county to really come up with a plan that was, was viable. For that trail, instead of this, this pipe dream of putting two side-by-side trails. Um, we went to court and the court decided decisively. Had actually state statute said in no uncertain terms, motorized uses are not allowed on state trails. Been in statute since the sixties, nobody read the statutes. So it was very easy for us to win that, and I think everybody at that time in the county was tired of it. And the county went ahead and developed the trail as a non-motorized greenway with funds that. Stipulated, non-motorized. So that's kind of where we are now, and there's been some weirdness that's occurred over the past. Since twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, but that's kind of how we got here. If that's helpful.
Mm-hmm.
What do you mean, kind of some weirdness?
Well, the, the state statutes, because they, they were pretty explicit about what could be on horse, what could be on state trails. It was, um, uh, hiking, biking, equestrian, electric mobility, scooters, that sort of thing, that was the only thing that we're supposed to be on, on state trails. And the, the legislature finally changed that in twenty fifteen, they changed the language in the state statutes to accommodate snowmobiles, ATVs, off-road vehicles, motorcycles and that sort of thing. Uh, on some state trails. So the county then started to. The county then reopened the planning process for the Stour. In the whole, there was a, a critical mass of supervisors on the county board that wanted this to be a motorized, wanted it to be more like the Cattail. Where it was all uses. Um, so, uh, that, that has been quite a fiasco, and that's its own discuss, fifteen-minute discussion. At the county level. But yet, but, um, you're right, the, the city has no jurisdiction about use on the trail. So I, you know, but I, but you are the trailhead for the Cattail and for the Stour. Uh, so you're an important commodity here, or excuse me, community.
So that being said, as the trail currently stands, is there anything you're looking for from the city of Amory to support it? I know I see on Facebook events all the time related to the trail, I know Leanne's been promoting that and working really hard on that. Um, what, what exactly are you looking for from us?
Um, well, the, the, the Friends of Stour have not asked anything from anybody for the most part, when the county. When the county developed that trail. Um, once they paid for it, they were done with it. They basically, then the county actually wrote a resolution that said, we will spend no money on the Stour. So the community came together and bought equipment, and we maintained that trail. Um, year-round for ten years with no money from tax revenues, no. We, we collect money for, for, uh, trail passes, we give that money to the county. Um, so we were working with just volunteer, uh, money and labor. Um, some support would be nice, some, uh, recognition that the, the trail does need, uh, maintenance. Uh, would be, uh, appreciated. Uh, we would like to continue, the Friends of Stour would like to continue, uh, a conversation with the city of Amory. Even though the county isn't allowing us to be on the trail, and I don't think they're allowing the snowmobile club to be on the trail other than to groom. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think snowmobile club's doing any brushing, any cutting, any mowing, any weeding, nothing. I don't think the county is allowing it. I think the county's doing all of the work on the trail. They're not doing a very good job.
And it has been the county doing the work.
It has been the county, yeah. So, um, if you think the county, if you think the trail's in great shape. And you think it's the snowmobile club, that's fine. Um, but it's not, it's the county. We think it's not in very good shape compared to what it was when the volunteers were taking care of it. Um, we would really like to get back into take grooming that trail and, and getting it back up to shape. Because, um, Amory's in this really interesting position where it's got this motorsport trail to the east, and it's a, again, it's a horse trail. To the east, and this non-motorized trail to the west, it's just the best of both worlds. And I think we can all agree that there, i- it's not, speed differentials aren't fun. It's no fun to be next to a, a fast-moving vehicle, and nobody's going ten miles an hour when they pass me on that trail. It just doesn't really ha- uh, uh, on a snowmobile, it just doesn't really happen. So we would like to continue a conversation here to make this trail as the best it possibly can. It was. Um, it has been caught, when the friends were grooming that trail. Spring, summer, fall, and winter, it was considered the best-maintained state trail in the state of Wisconsin. Let's do that again.
Other questions? Um, this is discussion only because we can't take action at this point. Or anything, but we would certainly consider everything we've heard this evening, and thank you all for the information and, and, and your feedback.
I would hope that you take a look at that two thousand seventeen resolution. And ask yourselves, what has changed since then, if any, that would. Have us, that would prevent us from, or deter us from, or causes. And not reaffirm this. I, I would ask you to reaffirm that two thousand seventeen standard.
Okay. You, uh, please ask us for a place on the agenda. And we, they asked us. That's so, absolutely, if you wanna do that, please. Ask for a spot on the agenda. Um, the, the, the discussion item was specifically asked for by the Friends of the Stour Trail. So if you, you can do the same. Please do. Um, there's more than one, more than two sides to this one, so. Like I said, we won't, we, we have no action to take at this time. But I do appreciate the, the interest and the passion that I see out there. It's important. Okay, next ordinance, oh, four, twenty twenty-three amendments to the Ethics Board of Ordinants. This was something that we acted on at the Committee of the Whole. Girls, girls, girl.
So with the, with the, uh. Friendly amendment last, uh, two weeks ago. For the, uh. Ethics committee, I would make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Uh, ordinance oh-four dash twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Motion has been made.
Second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion?
And just for clarification, the only amendment to it was to. Uh, remove the funding. To, from anyone except the council.
Basically, for approving the funding, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Uh, five-star marketing advertisement proposal. So also was forwarded from Committee of the Whole to continue the. Advertising as we have. Each year and keep it the same as last year. I'm trying to get to where I'm at.
I would make a motion to approve the five-star marketing. Plan as forwarded by our county.
And that was in the amount of one thousand nine hundred ninety dollars.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the five-star marketing, um. Advertising for one thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Ask a question, can we just put this in the budget so we don't have to approve this every year?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, it doesn't make sense. We just keep doing it each, and just a.
The money in the budget for this and not.
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I can do that.
Sometimes the obvious isn't obvious, as I said before, so.
Go ahead and take care of it. Yeah, it's a very reasonable cost year over year, so.
Okay. Police officer recruitment options, I think that there's been some discussions about how to improve. Postings, um, make it more, um, attractive. And some of the things, we're, we're limited in some ways because of, uh, we have a, a union contract in place. So, uh, some of those things were. Um, looking to become creative, I guess, so.
Well, Kip had mentioned it, and he's not here, so I guess. Keep it in your minds. You're into the city of Amory, I don't, I mean, there has been ideas of letting them take a car home or. Things like this, um. I can't think of any other ones off the top of my head, but just ideas to.
Um, I know you had sent an email about, um, potentially doing some sort of, um, retention bonus.
That too.
I would be in favor of that, just because I've seen it work in other fields really well that are also high burnout. Um, but obviously, there's a lot of things that we need to make sure are okay with the union contracts and things with that, but.
And there's, it's also, um. After a while becomes a limited return because now it's part of your, you, you always have to do it. So you're kind of stuck with that one if you don't. Don't try to keep, you know, ahead with, you know, when, when can you get rid of a bonus? Package, um, you have to build in more funds into the police contract or. Something.
It's slippery slope, we have to be careful.
And so our.
And that's, that's why I would be opposed to doing it right at this time. I think we have, what, two years left on the contract?
At the end of next.
End of next year, yeah. It's sooner, it's always sooner than you think.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 those are. I, I think that might be somewhat appropriate, but again, if you give a, a new recruit a signing bonus. Uh, folks that've been here for a while are not gonna be happy about that. So I think it needs to have some real discussion about how to, you know, if, if we wanna do that.
I did ask, um, Kip, um, to work with their union representative to, since we have that coming up to. Um, look for some creative ways to, um. Work with the contract in the future so that there could be some ways to recognize, um, you know, longevity. Recognize, um, things that we could do to keep people, um, interested and attract other people. The, the union contract can be. Um, a plus and a minus, you know, we knew when we went into it. A year and a half ago, oh, more than that. That it seemed like it was going to be a lot. We, we were gonna be far ahead, but, uh, what, what we heard. Coming out of it was, we're fortunate that it's three years because it won't be enough in three years. And the way that law enforcement is right now.
Are we, are, are the officers due for a, a bump now this fall too? Don't, that, didn't that contract say X amount for?
Yeah.
Get two, I get two.
All right, so this fall they'll get another bump?
Well, it depends how long they've been. So they'll all get bumped next, starting January first. Um, we don't have anybody on the sixth month, but if they're brand new, they do get bumped at sixth month.
And, but the, the officers that are here now are not part of that bump? Uh, I thought they were.
One of them is.
Yeah, that's not the whole.
Not, not the whole, the rest of them are already at the.
I, I would be in favor of when we get closer to that, to that time when, uh, when the, they go up. Is to reevaluate this. I don't think any of us on the council three years ago. Uh, understood the magnitude of the, of possible inflation and, and where things have gone, um. And we, we were very fortunate to get a three-year contract. Um, I'd rather be a little magnanimous and, and open that. And open that up for a, a percentage and, uh, you know.
Are you talking about within the contract year?
Pardon?
Are you talking about within the contract year?
I'm talking about December this year, when the, when they, when they, uh, they would get. A normal new bump.
Yep.
I think we should think serious about that and, and, uh.
Well, that's, you can always do that, it's just going to take, um, some type of reopening or letter of agreement with the union.
Maybe we don't even have to reopen it. Maybe we can just say, you know, we're gonna give you a little more money here, folks.
Well, then you've raised the platform. Probably you have.
Yes.
I've, I've worked with union.
Yeah, yeah, it's no. But I think we didn't, I mean, I for one certainly didn't understand.
But, and I think that there's a way for us to, um, recognize commitment.
Yes.
And be able to work with the union to put that into their contract as an addendum of agreement that we would say this. From this point forward, this is your starting point for the next contract.
Yeah.
I'd certainly be in favor of something along those lines, I'm not sure.
What I'm hearing is people volunteering to negotiate the next union contract, which is awesome. That is the best move yet.
We don't have to do that again, right?
Although, although it was, it, we did, we had a great.
Is it, it was a good.
Opportunity to have a, have a, um, good discussion with both sides, so. As long as we have a good working relationship, I think it's a good thing, and, and, and I agree, we should. Recognize, um, the commitment of those officers that are here.
Is there anything else that we can be doing to make our department more attractive? That's really what this comes down to.
Yep, and not, not sharing anything in public that I shouldn't from our interviews. But one of the things that was brought up by some of the, um, law enforcement panel. Is to make sure to not just say, but show that this council. Is supporting the police department in, in, in ways that are recognizable, not just saying. We support you, have a good day, um, you know, go up and visit them, go. Uh, I've had offers and, and I need to do it is, take a ride along. What their day is like, or their night is like. If you can't sleep with LJ one time, take LJ along. Next car rides, doesn't he?
He does.
There you go.
In the advertisement, I made sure that they updated it, made sure, everybody knows that it's, we've got good benefits here.
That's true.
Um, and it's a good area to, I mean, the community, the, the schools, all of that. We really need to focus in on what we have to offer here in the city of Amory, not just pay, but the other things too, so.
Well, the, the, uh, previous chief office, our hourly rate, was that for Steve or Steve and? Um, or where did that, that?
That was Steve.
Okay. And how did that compare with Marson's final salary, do you remember?
It was, yeah, it was right up there. They were close.
All right.
I will provide you some information.
Sure.
Okay, well, I, again, if we can, if you think of something, if there are ways that we can. Work together with our police department to, you know, do some initiatives together, um. We're, we're open, go visit upstairs, um, they're nice people up there. Okay, um, budget discussion. Favorite, next to police union contract discussion.
At there, um, there are some figures that we don't have yet. So this is just opening. Don't have a lot of the state's figures in yet and those types of things, so, um.
And I know, and, and I know, I, I talked to Bob before this one, but there's, there's other, you know, some things out there that were, like the. The, uh, city, the beautification, parks and rec things don't have a budget. But there are things like the pickleball courts that come up. Where does that fit? Does that fit? We could tell Jeff to do it, but that's, you know.
There's nothing better to do.
By the way. I haven't, have you seen him at?
I saw him get out of the city truck, and I put two and two together and decided it was Jeff. Uh, where, you know, where does that go if there's, if there's going to be, um, develop a, a, a budget item for something to do with those? Where do they go?
Well, it'd be a capital expense. Borrow it or levy for it, probably borrow.
Right, but I mean, who, how, where could that request come from, or how would that? Would it have to be something that we would develop as a city council for?
I wouldn't think so, I would think it'd be like a priority kind of list, if that like that was the top thing. Could be, okay, let's budget for it and figure out when we're gonna get the money. Um, yeah, I feel like that's.
And we are working. We are working on, uh, capital improvement.
I have a question for you all. Now, since we have been without a police chief. For the last four months of twenty twenty-two. And since we are without a police chief for. Four months or thereabouts of twenty twenty-three. At the current rates, I would guess we are twenty-five grand or better, maybe thirty to the, to the positive. And we've only had, uh. What, we started the year with five officers, and now we're down to three.
Five or six, now down to three.
Yeah, yeah. So, when you come up with a figure as to how much that's actually gonna cost this year or extrapolated, I think we should. Make a budget amendment to this year's budget. And at a minimum, put that much money into our operating fund, which I don't think is, is overly fat. Or, or at least think about some of the special, the projects that we're coming up with, uh. Um, otherwise, I don't, that just disappears in the grand hole of black, black hole of general revenues. And nobody ever sees it again, and, uh, yeah. So, a- and, and the odds are really good that, uh. Even if we would approve going back to the same number of officers that we had. Eighteen months ago or fifteen months ago, that, uh. We're probably not gonna have them this in the next fiscal year. It just, I mean, that's the nature of the beast, they aren't out there.
That brings up the question for, um. What did you, what's in the budget for the police department in the coming year? Is it to be fully staffed, or is it based on? How many?
We wanna get back to what we were.
Oh, I know, I mean, but if you're building the budget for the police department, what is, what's, what's that number support? Is it supporting?
Four officers on the lower end of the pay scale, like year two, three-ish, on the union scale is part of MFA.
Yep.
And then, uh, we got the six, six officers.
Okay, that's, that was my question, so. Okay. And that's something else that, in talking with Kip, um, because he was the union rep here. Um, talking about how do you control the, um, the union. The union contract, which always forces you to bring somebody in at year one regardless of their experience, which is. I understand it when you have somebody that comes in, that's. That's, um, first year here, but. If somebody's been experienced and has that kind of, you know, knowledge, you're hiring. That's why you don't get somebody who has much experience, so we'll have to, that's something that we have to look at in the new contract as well.
You pay for the qualifications.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
They do get for schooling and those types of things. You get that, but more than beyond that.
Right.
Yep.
I think the same applies for every department.
It really should.
It's every, it's every department that you're at, so I mean, there's.
Well, and you could, you have more. You have more flexibility when you don't have a union. I'm only, I'm only sensitive to the union one because we're stuck.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. But we have two people that are going to negotiate the next one, so I'm. I'm fine.
I take to you.
Any other, you know, it's pretty early in the budget process, but we can, we get a chance to see the numbers.
Thanks again for being on top of it. So that we can start looking at things early. That's helpful.
Yeah.
And like I said, capital improvement plan, we're.
Yeah.
In that going too, which is.
Yeah, and I know, I, I think all of the departments, I know that the library's on top of their budget. It's really. Developed pretty well, so. It helps when everybody's early. And then you, you can't get the disappointment gone before Christmas and you don't have to. Have to feel bad.
I'm not sure if this would fit into it, but I was up to North Park with my granddaughter and there was another family there. And, uh. He mentioned that we have. Nothing up there that's inclusive for handicapped children other than a wheelchair swing. And, uh. He said, if you want to look at something, look at, uh, the main park in Osceola. Because they have a lot of stuff for. Disadvantaged or handicapped.
Other enabled, yeah.
So. Then you see, um. Wheelchair access sandboxes at schools and stuff. I wonder if there's some things, I don't know if that'd be the parking wreck board. Or a committee that would look at increasing something along those lines.
Years ago, I got a grant for specifically that and we combined it with our dog park.
Okay.
Municipality and I got the grant and we. Included that as part of the dog park, which was kind of nice because then we got trails, you know, for the wheelchairs and we got other things that were incorporated.
I would be willing to bet that, you know, the Lions Club is, has taken all those two parks under their wing. Several times. I would think we maybe could. Start that planning process pretty quick because I'm guessing they might. Be interested in that.
Okay.
North Park in general just needs some.
But especially, and I'm glad that that was mentioned, but, um, having something that's available for somebody who's.
Playground equipment up there, you know, Lions Club donated all that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All that's get beat up.
Plenty of use.
Yep.
It does.
Is there a timeframe on the new slides or have they been installed already?
Oh, there's no new slides coming. We just repaired everything and got everything working.
I thought we had talked about new slides up there.
We talked about getting numbers. I've got numbers and stuff of what they would cost.
Right.
And I think we need to take one of those slides down. Um. The one that is kind of facing the campground, the long straight line down there. When you get down to the bottom of it, that support post at the bottom is almost worked up through the slide itself. Uh, I think that needs to be taken down until we can put a new one in there. If, unless there's a repair that can be done and I don't know, maybe there is. Okay, slide down with Jeff and.
And, and we'll send April up or ask April to go up there and watch, watch. Picture for the paper, video for the rest of us.
Get a picture of his face right when he comes off the bottom there.
No, I don't think he will. Any other budget? Items or questions at this time? Hey. Then our next item is we're closed, a s- closed session, uh, Wisconsin statute nineteen. One eight-five, sub-one, sub-C, police chief position. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises. Responsibility. We have a motion to go into closed session.
I would make that motion to go into closed session.
Your second.
My second.
Motion made and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor, roll call.
Marks?
Yes.
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Okay, we are back in open session, um. And.
We not have to do a roll call to come back and go?
Hmm, yes.
We have the motions second, that'll be a roll call. Marks?
Yeah, yeah. We will, uh, the council will be moving forward with interviewing the top two candidates for the police. Department, uh, Chief of Police. It's a time to be set. Soon, within the next week or so. Okay, um. Last item is appointment of mayor. I talked with Ben about how we should proceed, what we needed to do for that. Um. Mayor can appoint, but. There's no mayor, so. We will nominate for mayor and I will start by nominating Rick. As mayor. Will you run, will you accept?
I will.
Okay.
Good.
I'll close nominations.
You did that to me, so you know. Are there any other nominations? You're hearing none? Um. I think we need a motion to. Approve.
And I'm assuming we need a roll call too.
Yep, and we'll do a roll call, so.
I make that motion.
Okay. Okay, motion made and seconded to prove the nomination of Rick Van Blercombe as mayor. Roll call.
Marks?
Yes.
Let's skip you, Rick, because you're probably going to recuse yourself. Thompson?
Yes.
Elkin?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Platinum.
Motion carried.
I recuse myself.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your.
Absolutely.
I would really like to thank you for stepping in and doing that. I think you've done a good job.
You had nothing else to compare it to, so.
I sat through his review and it.
Yes, you did. Whatever.
See, he just took that over, you know.
I did that for you.
He did that for me.
Now, the real reason that we needed to have a mayor is so that I didn't have to ride on a. Car through the parade. Um, no, thank you, Rick.
Once every twenty-five or thirty years is acceptable, I guess.
Yeah, okay. Um, technically. This meeting is now yours.
No other business come before the common council?
We have to swear you in.
Got to have a, got to, yes, there's a vacancy.
You know, just saying that you're going to take applicants.
Sure. From his, from his words.
Yep.
Yep.
It would be wards one and two.
Yes.
North, North wards.
Um, do you need to swear them in before we're done?
And since we're. Pardon? Remarks, remarks to the public. Get out of town. Not particularly, I don't think. I don't. I just.
Just going to say that Rick not having anything to say is pretty much unusual to.
Well, um. I guess, well, if I gave a little bit of a statement, um. October third will mark fifty consecutive years of public service for me. It started as a boot recruit on the fire department, uh, October third of nineteen seventy-three. And, uh. I don't think I've missed a single year out of that fifty years, so being in some part of city government or not. Um. Bob will testify that I know where all the bodies are buried. Um, uh, but it's, you know, I've spent my life in Amory. Uh, I've enjoyed it. It's my town. I was born in Clear Lake, like not many people can say that. Um, but Amory has been mine since I graduated from high school, basically, so. I will make every attempt to. Bring what little knowledge I have to the job and, and, uh. And, uh. You know, you'll have to be, you'll have to be gentle with me like we were with Eric, uh, because. I don't have all the answers, even though sometimes it might, you know, somebody might think that. But, uh, I appreciate your confidence in me and, and, uh. We'll. Go forward from there. So thank you.
Thank you.
And regarding the nominations for, uh, filling this position. And that'll be, I'm sure, on the agenda for council as a whole, or, yeah, the council as a whole, meeting as a whole. And we will. I too would like to have.
Have a full council.
Yeah, full council before that time, so. That said. Can I do that without?
Picture that way.
Alright, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rick Van Blercombe.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of mayor.
To the office of mayor.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
On the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm.
Swear or affirm.
And I'll support the constitution.
But I'll support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution.
And the constitution.
State of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge. Duties of said office.
Best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. For helping God.
Thank you.
This will be next to you.
This minute. Yeah, it'll work.
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Yes.